Okay, great. So we're coming back from executive session and moving back into our public meeting. The school committee will be in person for school committee members and the public. A remote option is available for community members unable to join in person, like Melissa Keith, who's home sick, and I'm filling in for her. Members can join from a PC, Mac, iPad, iPhone, or Android device by clicking the URL in our agenda, which can be found on the Found with the Genders Center, also on our school website. We'll start with the mission and vision.
Mission: The Found with Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. Our vision: Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you so much, Heather. We do not have our student with us tonight, so we'll move right to public. Push the plug. Oh, we didn't. See, I'm rusty. I'm rusty. We didn't start to pledge. Thank you for the heads up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much, Margaret. When we move into public comment, members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length, and due to the open meeting law comments, the committee cannot take action on public comment. Do we have anyone here for public comment tonight? Thank you. Seeing no public comment, Gil, are you recording tonight?
Yes.
Anyone else recording? Great. All right, thanks. Next, we have acting on the ski trip, field trip to New Hampshire.
So this is a recurring trip. You approved the ski trip last year. So Mike Campbell is taking a group of students, hopefully with your approval, to the Waterville Valley Ski Resort. It's on a Saturday, March 16th.
Any questions about ski trip? Can I answer my motion?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's a roll call vote, and we'll start with you, Melissa. She's a yes by nodding.
Goldstone, yes.
Jeremy Dearest, yes.
Augusta, yes.
She will.
Loving yes.
Welch also a yes. It passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Have an awesome time. Love that. Next, we have another field trip, the MBL High School Discovery.
So we will be doing, we're planning to do this again this year. Carmela is here, so I'll just let her share a little bit more exciting information.
I'm going to show off my lovely little photo. This is a tentative flyer for the activity, if it is accepted and approved. So this year, as last year, kids between the minimum of 10 kids, maximum of 16 kids. It's completely covered by MBL, so there's no cost to any students that are invited, which is why it's very obvious that it's free to use. I would have loved to do this when I was a kid, but my first thought would be like, I can't afford to go. So that's not an issue with this program. So last year, we did using eDNA to discover the animals that were present. This year, we're doing something very interesting that I've never heard of before, and I don't think our kids have either. So the title of this year's program is What Is Secretly Hiding Right Under Your Nose? That's what I'm calling it, if I'm getting their attention. But the actual technical name is Visualizing Bacterial Communities of the Oral Microbiome. So for those of you that are not science nerds like me, that means that basically the picture that you see here is actually a picture that someone has taken of the microbiome on their, living on their tongue, bacteria living on their tongue. And so kids are going to learn how to take pictures like this. They're also going to learn that each of the different colors that you see on there are actually different species of bacteria that are living there together as a small ecosystem, a microecosystem, and they're all basically interacting with each other, helping each other, even fighting against each other for space. So they're actually going to be making these visuals of their own tongues, their own oral microbiomes. So yes, is it gross? Yes. Are the kids going to love it? Absolutely. So the dates that we have for this year are going to be Monday, March 11th through Wednesday, March 13th. I'll be attending with the students as the chaperone. And again, no cost to the kids, completely covered, completely covered by MBL and also a donor. And they'll be staying on the MBL campus in Swope. All the meals will be served at Swope, and they'll be doing the lab work, actually in the labs. And the gentleman that's running this year's program is a published author, who's actually, he does photography, part-time, science photography, pretty interesting gentleman. And actually, he helped me a little bit with the flyer, so that was kind of cool. So yeah, that's pretty much it, and I could answer any questions that you have.
Wonderful. Any questions about MBL's field trip?
Yeah, first is having done this before, I mean, 10 to 16 students, is that all the interest you get? Or is there a selection process?
That's a limit on it. So we get, the first year that we did it, we didn't get a lot, but then when the kids came back and talked to other kids about how awesome the program was, we got a lot of interest, and the interest just keeps increasing every year. So I think last year, we had, I think, over 20 kids apply. And usually what we do is we give priority to juniors and seniors because they won't have another opportunity, especially seniors, they can't do it next year, but juniors and below can. And we don't allow freshmen on the trip. But I think last year, we had one sophomore who was particularly mature for his age, and so he was allowed to come. But usually, it's juniors and seniors. And again, that's who we get precedence to. So to get into the program, kids have to fill out an application. They also have to talk about why they want to go on the trip, what interests them about them, or what interests them about science. So they do have to put in some effort to be able to go because it is a, it is a pretty substantial program.
Two other questions, because they're missing three days of school.
Yes.
So how?
Yeah, basically, yes.
And just curious how the day works, because they go to school for an hour and then provide their own transportation, they're all expected to drive themselves, or they just, for those three days, they go straight to MBL?
They are on campus the entire time.
Okay.
So they will usually, and again, the time changes. Last year, I think they had to report there by 8:30 in the morning. So they came in 8:30, they get checked in, so they go into Swope, they get their own ID badges, which is pretty cool. They take pictures, they get given their room keys. Obviously, females have to bunk with females, males with males, and they go in and they drop off their stuff, given a few minutes to sort of get settled, and then they meet with MBL faculty, and they talk about the program, and then they basically go to classes, go to the labs, and do that back and forth, go to lunch, come back, do more labs for three solid days. So there isn't any, there's no school during that period. But they are responsible for making up all the work they've missed, which is actually part of the, it should be part of the document list. I think it says on the form that you have to get the teachers to sign for you to leave class. I think it does state that you have to make up any work that you missed.
The pink form that the kids.
Yeah, one of the forms that have to get signed off has that on it.
Okay.
Yes.
You mentioned the application form. Is that evaluated by anyone? And if so, who?
It's usually Chris Brothers and myself, and then if we need a third person, we can find a science teacher. They also have to get recommendations from a science, a teacher, honestly, not a science teacher, but they have to get recommendations from a teacher as well. So Chris Brothers and I usually look through the applications. We decide whether or not, you know, were they able to go last year? Did everything go well last year? What year are they? Then if it comes down to really making the decision, we look at their essays, and then we evaluate their essays. Did somebody have a better reason than another, perhaps? And that's usually how we do it.
So if someone went last year, they can go again this year?
Yes. However, obviously, if we have people that are great candidates, that have not had the opportunity to go, they get first priority as well, because we want to get as many kids to do this program as possible. And as much as it breaks my heart to do that, because, you know, I lived with the kids for three days last year, and I got to know them, and I see their names again when they apply, I'm excited, but we don't want to get as many kids in there as possible, so.
Hopefully, I tell them that there's a tremendous interest, and they will expand it to 20.
Yeah, I don't know about that. It's, it is a substantial cost, so.
I'm sure.
But we're actually really lucky.
I think you said you had three questions. Did you get them all?
Yes.
Any other questions? Great. Do we have a motion to approve the field trip?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. A second?
A second.
Heather's got it that time again. And it's another roll call vote. Melissa, you want to start us off?
I think you can hear me now. Can you hear me? Only because I'm on my phone. A little ridiculous.
Hey, we'll take old school.
Yes. Melissa Keith, yes.
Heather Goldstone, yes.
Jeremy Dearest, yes.
Augusta, yes.
To the U.
I'm thinking yes.
Welch also a yes. It passes unanimously. Thank you so much. It's a wonderful opportunity. And I have to say, I heard a story on the radio the other day about Crispr, and the first time I ever heard it was when the kids went down to MBL, the first one.
That was the one my daughter went to.
Very first time.
I was like, hey, I know what that is, thanks to the kids. All right, thank you very much. Thank you. We're going to jump out of order because next is our update from the one that I'm talking to, they're not, so didn't you have anything? So if we see them pop in, we'll just go back. So next is presentation from the athletic department.
How you doing, everybody?
Great, how are you? Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. So I figured since my first time, a little background on me, and then my update of the fall, and kind of how the winter's looking now. So I've been in Found with Public Schools since 1975, when I started at T-Ticket School. You've been paying me for 30 years. So the reason I've taught here for 30 years, I was assistant principal for a couple of years, and this is probably the only job I would have left teaching for. My, something, you know, I know my mom, she worked for the school system forever. So what she taught me was to serve, obviously, and that's where, why I'm here doing this job. I had so many mentors and people in my life. My father was kind of in and out of my life, so my coaches were like my dads. They were like my role models. They helped me along. So that's kind of my reasoning why I'm doing this, is because I want to, you know, help people become those role models for people that. So those people took care of me, they taught me all my life lessons, so that's kind of why I'm sitting here today. Today's athletes, I'd say, everybody says kids are different. Yes, I believe, but I believe that the same values of accountability, hard work, and all those things are important. That's what sports are all about. But I think, you know, when I was a kid, I had, you know, I always heard tough love, tough love. Now I think it has to be love tough. So they have to know you care first, they have to know you, you know, love them, and then they will rise to the occasion. It can't be the other way around, like I told you so. And I think that's what, and we have some great coaches that I think are doing those things right now. So that's kind of, I have a saying that I've been saying a lot, is how you do anything is how you do everything. So how do you, how you, you know, do you leave the locker room looking good? Do you pick up the field after you leave? Those things are important, those things will lead to success and victories after that. So I walk out on the field and I find a field hockey ball, and the field hockey coaches are like, oh, no! You know, here he comes again. So, but those are things that we value and we want to have happen. So as far as how do I know I'm going to be doing a good job? I went to the Hall of Fame dinner, and I heard like the former athletes speak about their time at Found with High School and what it meant to them. And I'm like, that's what I want, like, that's what I want people to say. Like, those are the moments, like, there'll be a buzz about Found with Athletics, there'll be people excited about it again. So those are things, like, that's how I'll know, like, talk to Dr. Harris about my goals and whatever, and that's like, how are we going to look, how are we going to look at that? And what's, that's going to, you know, that's the thing that I want people to say about Found with Athletics. Some other goals is, we have a lot of paper. I want to, like, digitalize the office. So basically, if I, when I leave at some day, I want to be able to hand, like, Google folders to the next person of every single thing, instead of have folders and a piece of paper this big. So those are things like we're looking at. We're digitalizing the whole schedule system. Like, if I go in a system called Arbiter, I can put it, when I make that change, now if you go to the Found with Athletics website, instead of having the old Word documents that never got updated, you click on it now, and it will, when I update and put in the score, it will put in the score. So everything's going to be to that. We're working on a process, I don't know how to do it yet, of the roster in there also, but that's something that we have to work on now. So I learned a lot since July, since I started this fall, some things that I think our coaches care about kids. I think our culture's pretty decent, the kids want to be there. The one thing I'm really looking for is kind of shooting for that excellence piece. I think we're good, but I don't want to be good. I want us to be excellent. So some things I've learned along the way, I think there needs to be a little better transition between Lawrence and the high school. So I kind of came in the summer, there's a lot of questions that fall, starting in the fall. It's, it's a little bit difficult when you, we have the kids in front of us, and we just started winter sports yesterday, and I still have kids, oh, I didn't know I had to sign up. Well, it's been in the morning announcements for the last month. Like, we've been walking around the halls telling you to sign up, like, so that was even difficult. But when a kid's at Lawrence, and then they're coming, I have some ideas, I've been talking with Mr. Bushy about some ideas to how to promote it through the year at Lawrence to get, to get kids to be better informed about high school athletics. In that regard, we're working on some cool things. Football, we've traditionally, there's nowhere for a seventh and eighth grader to play, so we've had an eighth grade waiver for them to come up and play freshmen. This year, we didn't really have enough freshmen out of freshman team. So Mr. Bushy and Joe Morenci, who used to be the former coach, teaches at Lawrence, were working on, like, bringing back a middle school football team, so they will stay at Lawrence there. So we're gauging interest now. We have some things going on with our weight room. We have a stipend position that the, is posted now for the winter, so athletes will be able to go in there and have an actually certified trainer person to do it. We had it last summer. One of our teachers, Rob Murray, who used to work for APT, did it last summer, so we had eight to 10 every Monday through Thursday. There was a pretty good amount of kids coming for a very new program, so we're looking to build on that. And then that would be a way to catch the Lawrence kids too, because it'd be open to them, so they could come in also. As far as fall, so kind of going through the fall, football, kind of a tough year win and losses wise, but they, I mean, I think in the total program, from the beginning first day, and usually when a program starts, you might have a couple of kids try it for a few days and then leave. I think there was a total of only three kids that left on a, on a two and nine football team. So that says something about the adversity, the adversity they faced. They faced a ton of injuries, they dealt with a lot, and I, that Montemoy game, their second-to-last game, they hadn't won in a while, and they just, they ran back a kickoff to win it, it was awesome. So that was so cool. So they, they, they had a good year as far as, like, keeping kids, and when coach got hired, it was his first year, we talked about, there kind of was a little bit of a culture of kids coming and going and whatever, and the kids need to show up. Kids showed up every day, and they worked hard. And I mean, if you go ahead, walk by the practice, I'm like, this team's got one win, they look up. They're all excited to be there, so that's the first step. And I think with, hopefully getting Lawrence going and the weight room going, that we're in the right direction there. Our girls soccer team made the state tournament for the first time in a little bit. They had a bunch of freshmen, they have a couple of freshmen that made all, the league All-Stars, so that was nice. The boys soccer team, they got down a little bit in the beginning of the year, they had a couple of games that didn't go their way, and you wouldn't have thought, like, they would have just gave up. They battled and battled and battled, and actually made it to the last game, they lost 2-1. I think if they won that game, they would have actually gotten the state tournament. They finished 34th in their top 32 make it. Their record was like five, their record was five, 10, and three, but they had, like, the power ranking of the teams they played, they played a very hard schedule, so that almost got them in the tournament. I think one more win, they would have been there. Cross country, we had a league record of three and two. We had one gentleman, Sil Skardner, sophomore, that finished 13th in the state. So pretty impressive there. He was the co-MVP of the league. Volleyball, last year, they had a four and 15 record. This year, they went 10 and 10. They had 11 and 11 at the end of it, they actually made it to the state tournament, won their first game, then they went and played eventual state finals midfield, and they lost to them. Field hockey has made it, the last three years, has made it to the final four, the final eight, and the final eight in the last three years. We had the league MVP, Avery Johnson, this year, so they're always a, I think, when Janie Norton took over, all my daughters played through Janie, and now Coach Lima, I think Found with Field Hockey has never not made the state tournament, and I don't, as long as I remember seeing field hockey, it's pretty impressive. So when I, Found with High School's got, at the moment, about 730-ish students. We had 276 fall athletes, that's about 38% of our population played sports. So I thought that was a pretty good amount of students. We have an additional 100 that played at Lawrence. They only have three teams, like, three programs, so that was pretty impressive. So being able to have football there, I don't think it's going to really hurt the other programs that much. This winter, so far as of today, it's day two of winter, we had 192 students signed up. There's a little bit less sport offerings in the winter, so that's good. One impressive thing, we had, we had a pep rally long before the homecoming game, and Dr. Harris was, where's all the freshmen? It's like, you looked at the stand and like, I thought there was more freshmen, and then all of a sudden, all the teams walked in, then everybody went and sat where they were, and all of a sudden, the freshmen's stands filled up. And I went, let me look. So as of today, there was 193 freshmen, and I looked, just a cursory look, I looked at all the freshmen, I went down the list off the top of my head of who signed up, whose name I've seen in a sport or know they play a sport, and I think we're like a little bit over 100 of them, between the fall and the winter of playing a sport. So that tells you something, that's kind of really cool. Girls' basketball right now has 32 girls signed up. They're like, we haven't had this many girls in forever, like, we don't want to cut anybody, what can we do? So I started reaching out today, like, does every, does anybody have a freshman girls' teams around to try to get a few, a few games for them? So the coaches are already plotting, there's three coaches there to figure out, like, how we practice, and can we add some freshman games in to get the, so Coach Feminor, the JV coach, is like, I'll coach 16 girls, that's fine with me, and I'll take, you know, maybe one, we can do like a nine-go-to-the-freshman game, and some of the varsity plays in the JV, they're already scheming on how to do that. So, I mean, I talked to, I talked to Martha's Vineyard today, they were like, I think we are in the same situation. Then I talked to Montemoy, they're, we're in the kind of the same situation. Then I talked to Sandwich, we're in the kind, so I think we might be able to enable some freshman games there. So I think that's all. Any questions?
Great, thank you so much for the day. Any questions for Tom Siff?
Yes.
Hi.
This is Augusta, how are you?
I'm not, having been off the committee for a few years, I'm not up to speed as to what the future plans are within the athletic department, but I was wondering if any consideration, again, because I had been asking 20 years ago about adding any sports. I was a longtime advocate for adding a wrestling team or something like that, for those guys, the bigger guys, to occupy their time and leisure time, so.
We actually, I've heard a lot about wrestling. So when I first got the job, Greg Gilbert called me about two days after, he's like, I like wrestling. I'm like, great, just give me, give me a chance, yeah. So we've, I've actually done some research, and there's some momentum of like a wrestling club. So we'd start as a club. The problem is the wrestling mats that we used to have are no longer here. So I've reached out, I have to have a call up to Barnstable, supposedly they have some extra mats. We'll see. And if that's the case, I've also talked to Mashpee about someday maybe co-op-ing with them or doing something with them. So it's kind of in infancy stage, but yes, I've made some, I made some phone calls, and I'm working on that. But it would, in a perfect world, if we had a mat, we would have Officer Brand, our school resource officers, interested in kind of leading it. So there is some traction in that, it's just at the infancy stages of that.
And if I just may, is there any procedures, protocols set up in regards to helping kids meet the clearinghouse and even get some interest from recruiters for different colleges? In past years, I don't think there was as much, but I really would like to see something like that happen.
Yeah, when you sign in to actually sign up for a sport on Family ID, you actually can click yes or no, if you'd like to be included in like those kind of emails and those kind of information. Then we help them along with that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Great. Thanks.
Thanks, Vanessa.
In answer to Susan's question, they didn't have gymnastics before, did they?
Yeah, a long time ago.
Quite a long time, a long, long time ago. But that, we partnered with Mashpee, right, to have the gymnastics team, so that.
Yeah, we have a.
Your voice was still heard even though you weren't here.
We have a call up, we have a call up now with Barnstable and Mashpee. They, they work out of flip flops and Mashpee.
Do you have anything else? You're good?
No, I'm good, that's kind of.
Yeah, I'm curious, a few words caught my ear. You said something about creating a buzz, wanting there to be a buzz again. Curious if you feel like that means there, there kind of hasn't been, and then you said, you know, we've got, we've got some good coaches, we've got a decent culture, but we want to aim for excellence, and so how do you get from good and decent to excellent?
I think just what I, just what I'm talking about, just, I think, being there and, you know, supporting them and creating an environment of like, what I talked about with girls' basketball, is like, I'm right there going, okay, like, I brought it up, maybe you need some freshman games, just to support them like that, so that they can, they can feel supported and want to do that. I mean, I have three coaches telling me, I don't care, we don't need another coach, we just, we'll figure this out. You know, Bob Bush is the head coach, he's like, I'll go coach the freshman game, and then go coach the varsity game. So just that support of them will create that culture, I think. I think, I mean, being from Found with, and being at Found with High School, when I graduated with 394 kids, and had Mashpee with us, I think there's a perception out in town still that where this, when I say, again, we have a, you know, we had 1,500 kids school, and now we're 730, I think we have to, I think now we're in the right spot. We've kind of been a Division II team for a while, when we were like the smallest in Division II, we just moved down to Division III, our number fits solidly in there. So when I say like more excitement, I think we're at a point right now, we're at a good spot. Our biggest class in the high school is our freshman class, so I think we're gaining some traction there with that. So that's what I mean by kind of the excitement and buzz that people want to come to games, and people want to, and I think being at the Hall of Fame, you know, you hear that, hear that people, the people talk about it, and I think with that, with, you know, the Hall of Fame kind of being defunct for a little bit, and COVID being, you know, COVID being happening, I think that, that's the little lull that you're kind of, that kind of speak of. Like, today, I got an email from a former football coach, and he lists five things we need to do to get better in football, like, I see this, I see this, and every single thing he listed was conversations we've already had that I talked about, like, so we're on the track of, he's telling me this, wait, you know him back? Yes, I agree with you. We, we did this, we got this, we had this happening, we have this happening, we have this happening. So those connections, I think, myself being from Found with, and knowing a lot of the old timers, like, I think I have the ability to kind of bring the old and the new kind of together.
Do you feel like all of the coaching staff, everybody's on board with the love tough instead of the tough love, or is there room for, or need for, like, training or team building, or more kind of development?
There's always room to grow with everything. There's a, there's always, there's always room to grow with everything. I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and say everyone's perfect, cause I'd be lying to you, myself included. Um, but I think there's, there's a definite, I saw in the fall, most coaches are buying into that. And I think, I think sometimes the message, sometimes the message is right and the delivery is just not quite right. But I think that, that's something we're working on. I think, um, you know, I've taught for thirty years. I've coached for twenty-five, you know, a bunch of years of those and I know a lot of them. Um, which can be difficult, but I think in this case it's not, cause they think they know me and I can talk to them and, you know, kinda coach them along. Um, kinda, it's like being, you know, I kinda liken it to like, an NBA basketball coach has to be like different than a college basketball coach. College, you got the scholarship, you got the whatever. The NBA person has their money. You have to work with them differently. So I'm gonna work with them as, you know, my colleague and kinda talk to them and go through with them. And I mean, my non-negotiable, as I've told them, is I just, I don't want you to intimidate kids. I want you to, you know, coach kids and build kids up and help them that way. Is it perfect? No. Did we have, do we have coaches that think that? My experience so far in the fall was that they, they care about kids. So it wasn't, I didn't have an instance where I didn't, I didn't think someone was egregious to a kid at all. So.
Any last questions? She's waving like three.
Sorry. Um, sorry that I can't be there in person, Todd. I really was so excited to have you and it was my idea to have you come and present to us because for all, I think all of my years on school committee, we never had a presentation specifically from athletics. I know that, um, Kathleen had come specifically for certain things, but not like an overall arching, what's our plan, what's our goal kind of thing. So I apologize that I can't be there, but I am so grateful that you are there. That being said, as somebody who has also been around since the seventies in Falmouth Public Schools, you are a natural fit as the athletic director. I congratulated you in the very early days that you accepted the position and I one hundred percent stand by it. I feel very lucky, uh, that our kids today will have such a great leader as yourself, who has not just taught, but walked this walk and has been an athlete and knows what it's like to, to do what we're asking our students and our coaches to do. I also like how you've changed that you're turning the tide from tough love to love and then tough. I think that when we understand as a society how, um, uh, teen psychology and child psychology works, I think that it's important for us to realize that showing students and children love first and security and then that, but here's what we expect out of you is so important. So I thank you that that is your overarching message. The, speaking of the Hall of Fame dinner, it was completely humbling to be among the greats. And I was very grateful to be invited and I'm glad that you brought it up. There were so many athletes and coaches and every single athlete got up and thanked their coaches. And there were a few athletes that were so humbled that they couldn't speak for themselves and coaches got up and spoke on behalf, on their behalf, which was completely amazing. And it just really shows a nod to Falmouth Athletics. Um, I love that you're bringing today's athletic office into today. Um, I can only imagine how frustrating it must be to try to look through a stack of files so big when you can just do a couple of clicks and either print it off or email it or whatever. So again, great. Um, and I just wanted, um, once again, say thank you. And I wanted to ask you, what can we do for you? How can we support you? Is there anything more we can do to support or help athletics?
Um, I think, I mean, we're in a great spot, I think, as far as, um, monetarily, we've always been supported. I think we don't have views or fees. Um, I haven't, I've been able to schedule the games I need to, the buses I need to. Um, the only thing I would say is the, um, if we add this Lawrence football as that support of that, I think we're, we're looking at a grant to secure all the beginning costs of that, but then there would be a coaching move going forward. So just supporting us as, um, what we need is coach-wise, buses-wise. I mean, I know there's things, um, in order to have a, you know, successful athletic program, you need the supplies and materials and that's been supported, I believe, through the time. So just continue that. I think that would be greatly appreciated.
Great. Hey, oh, sorry, Derek.
It's just a comment. One thing too, I think we have a great history of student athletes to lead for. I mean, the amount of athletes around the honor society or
Yep.
Um, get good, not honor society, get really good grades is been remarkable.
Our, um, I'm in the process. I didn't have it for, our awards night is Thursday, so our secretaries are working now to compile the list for me. But it was the, the, um, boys' hockey coach came in the other day and he's like, checking whoever signed up so far. The secretary prints off the grades and he's like, there's gotta be some award for this or something. He's like looking at the grades and I'm like, let me see. So he shows me, I'm like, like, I think literally the worst grade in the whole hockey program was a C.
Yeah.
I'm like, this is amazing. It was, I know, I don't, I don't know. So it was, it's, it's pretty impressive. And I mean, it's, it's the saying, what, what's the saying? Like busy people get more stuff done or like, you know, I think that's the same with, I know myself, I, as a student athlete, I, I played three sports because I knew I'd get up for school and be there and go and it made me, you know, made me a better student.
So I love incentives.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah. Well, and it's a student athlete, not the other way around.
Good.
Yeah. So, well, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
And sharing really well. So we appreciate it.
Thanks.
Take care. Keep going. Oh, turn the page. Presentation on diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging.
Let's hear it goes to there.
You're gonna.
I can do it. Would you like?
Oh, that's true. Yeah. So then you can see Melissa. Yeah.
Oh, Melissa. All right, all right.
It's all yours.
Thank you.
Take it away. I wore my shirt.
I saw that. I was gonna say something, but now you, you're doing it.
I was like, oh, it's on the schedule. I'll, I'll wear my necklace.
Ryan, you helping me?
Yeah.
I, I'm trying to share the screen and it says host disabled.
Well, yeah, you probably won't be able to fix that. All right. All right, Ryan.
All right. All right.
I wish my ball was.
No, it's me. I don't know what I'm doing. All right. So, um, wait, my name's Henry St. Julian. Love that shirt on you. And the, I, um, Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Belonging. And, uh, I wanna start off the story. Um, a couple of weeks ago, November fifteenth, we went to Lawrence and saw all the seventh graders basically down to the cafeteria. And they were, they were basically working on their cars. And, uh, it was this, uh, Melissa's class and she's the engineering teacher. And, and all the kids were partnering up to and they were getting their cars all ready to race. And that was, I know it was loud, it was boisterous. I was excited. I was taking pictures. It was awesome. And, um, two, there were a couple of, you know, you have to start off, you, you get a car and you race with another student. And I saw these two youngsters, uh, and they're right there, Liam and Nico. Basically, they were struggling. They were actually struggling. They were in the starting line and, and their car was moving. And so right away, I'm rooting for them. Any, any other dog, I'm rooting for them. So they're basically struggling and then they're sweating and out and that kind of stuff. And I found out later on, I talked to the boys, that they had a hard time, they had a lot of challenges. And they were not where they're supposed to be, but they're saying, you know what? We're gonna do our best no matter what. We're just gonna do our best. So, uh, they got it all set up. The car took off. They won. And I was like, I was like, oh my god. Quietly rooting them, quietly. But, uh, but then, um, I had to be called away and so I didn't get to see any. But while I was doing, when I was looking at the, watching the kids go on buses, I see Nico right there in blue and he has something around his neck. I go, what's that around his neck? He goes, we came in first place. And I was like, oh, that's awesome. And I, I was like going, what a great day where, uh, this Louis is, is really getting kids excited, getting kids, um, ready and doing excellence in engineering, in engineering. And, um, so I was really excited. Like, and I thought that was an X example of excellence. Shouldn't say excellence, but that's an example of excellence. And not only of excellence, but also, um, while I was there, a teacher was saying to me, another teacher was saying to me, uh, last year we had a, a scheduling problem and some of the multilingual students weren't involved. But this year the administration made sure it happened. And I was like, I didn't even ask for that. And they're like, there's a culture of like, we want this to happen. And I, and I was very appreciative of that. And then when I went over to Ms. Louis to, to congratulate her, she was all into, um, I, I'm excited about the program, but who's missing? Who's not there? Who doesn't have the skills to be there? And, and, and she was like going, again, we, we have to keep on looking at excellence, but equity, who's not looking and who's not there is in her face. So I felt like that little program, that little, little image story showed, showed a school really going, we want to have excellence, but we also want equity. And I feel like that's the work. The work is, is doing that. So these youngsters, I'm looking, these youngsters here were, you know, they allowed me to take their picture, allowed me to, to talk to them. And they're, 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 they're going further, like, we wanna do, we wanna win. And, and again, they're always checking out their, their, their car and goes, what's, what's missing with this car? What's happening? And I think that's equity. Like, what's going on? Cause we want this car to be an excellent car. So what's missing? What's happening? I feel that's what we're doing with our school. Like, we're excellent. What's missing? Let's keep, keep on going. So I, I appreciate for them allowing me to share their story, but, uh, that's it. Uh, that's their, their little story. So, um, the heart of the work, so the work is, you know, what's missing? What, you know, excellent, but we really wanna know, um, what we need to do more. So with the heart of it comes in, you might see this before when we're talking about our goals, is this, um, i- is the, uh, framework for student excellence. So when we, in this school system, we say that student excellence, student succeeding is dependent on, you know, um, communication or community partners, um, our high Clipper excellent, excellent, high Clipper standards, I should be looking at my notes, high Clipper standards to really get there. And by tapping through all these components, we can, um, achieve student excellence by removing some barriers, by creating a welcoming environment, by ensuring that all students are involved in that academic and opportunity. I love what Todd was saying here because, um, one of my, one, a, a student came up to me and the other student said to me, Marcos, I'm gonna say Marcos, cause I, I really appreciate senior soccer player. And he said, one of the things that really got me into transition into from Brazil to here was my experience with sports. And I said, yes, that was, that's exactly what we, we wanna make sure, give every opportunity for kids to be in sports, so they can do that transition and succeed. And so I thought that was fantastic. We can do more of what Todd is saying. Love tough, which I'm gonna, I'm gonna quote him as much as possible, but I thought that was, that's an equitable term. I'm talking right now. Love tough is fantastic. It goes with your, your vision. Um, if you see, you know, you, that's a, that's, we'll have to change our vision, but anyway, we won't. Uh, um, so the equity, so what, what, we're, we're looking for is an equity audit to really see the work. So we decided a while back, before I came, you said, let's do an equity work. And so all these things, um, uh, we're, we're talking about, you already know, but I think the equity work that we pursued is a very collaborative kind of work. Let's work together and see what's going on. And so that, that's been our work is trying to see how we can work together. Um, let's look at the data. Uh, let's focus on all these things today. Uh, this, this audit is gonna be focused on, uh, academic expectations, safety and relationships, attitude and culture. There could be other aspects, but we're gonna concentrate on that. But really, we wanna use the equity tool as a, as a, um, a means to get to our statement says, student success for every student every day. I think that's important. But I like the, what we're trying to do together, not one person coming out high, but we're doing this together to do that. So I appreciate the equity, um, procedure. So to do that, that's what we tried for. To do that, we looked at, we, uh, I think last fall, we told you that we, uh, were partnering up with this, uh, equity consultant and, uh, MAC, we're gonna call it MAC, but it's Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium. They really wanna make sure that, uh, we provide a baseline. Sometimes people like goes, is this who we are? No, this is a snapshot of where Falmouth is at this moment. And now where do we go from there? So that, I love that, that aspect there is like, this is a snapshot. And they're an external group coming in and bringing internal people, our staff, our teachers, our parents, our students, to really figure out what's the unbiased baseline. And so I like that aspect. And they're external to come in with the internal, looking people here and then determining a unbiased, um, uh, level of the work. So I, I, I really appreciate what they're doing. They're pushing me, but that's, I, I like what they're doing. And so when you look at the outside, when you look at the work, here's what they're trying to do. They're trying to, they really love this aspect of working with internal members. And when we work with internal members, what I like about that is that, uh, we're looking at the outcomes. What's the outcome of students? And don't worry about that students all have shoes. I like their analogies. But do the shoes fit? And does everyone have the shoes? What kid's missing the, the, the wrong shoe? Individualize it. So we wanna look at the outcomes. When we look at the outcomes, we have to look at the other aspects of race, gender, religion, national, you know, origin, some things that we don't wanna talk about, but we really need to talk about when we really wanna make sure that the outcomes are, are really legitimate. So, um, this is their analogy. I got that from their, that, that, their website, this analogy with service, uh, about the shoes, um, aspect, but do the shoes fit? And are we making sure that we have a system capable of always making sure our, is the educate, is this the right education? Is this the right, um, system for our kids, all of our kids? And so that's what they're looking at. So they have said that, um, they basically said, we need to go do this in three different gate, um, data gathering. And I, I like what they're talking about. I, I'll just say something about data. I think equity audit is like every educational thing. We, we are in the business of getting data and trying to figure how we can do better. And I think with the same thing with this equity audit, it's nothing different, but we're focusing on some, some, some interesting areas. And so here's what it is, here's what we're doing. Data analysis. First thing that they wanna do is this. They're going to grab, um, data that we actually give to the state of Massachusetts, data like, uh, graduation rates, uh, test scores, attendance, uh, discipline, all these outcomes, they're going to grab and just, and gather up and see how this might, um, determine how well we are seeing other kids. That's their first thing. And we started this in the, uh, summer of, this past summer. So they've been, we're almost done with that, with that data gathering. The second tool is school team assessment, uh, self-assessment. Really, I've been calling it consensus teams. And these teams here, what they're gonna do is they're gonna talk about individual schools and determine whether they have, what's their equitable level? Where's the axis? Where are the? And, and I think that what's powerful about this, and a lot of the teachers that are involved in this consensus team, they love the discussion. They love to talk about, this is the first time they're saying, okay, let's talk about where our school, school's at. And it's a diverse group. It's, we're talking about some teachers that might be talking with secretaries and some other people say, we don't do this. And then you talk to the, uh, another person about the school and they're like, oh, we do this? And it's, it's a great discussion and they've found value. And I think that we need to capture that, um, this, the, this consensus to really talk about whether our, our school is, where we're going with our school. So they collaborate together and they have another snapshot. So you have the data analysis, the snapshot. Now you have these consensus teams. Each one from each school is taking a snapshot. And this is started in the fall and we're just, we're waiting for one more team to submit their, their, uh, analysis and we're, we're almost done with that. So everything's barely done. And the third tool, uh, is the, of, of data analysis, is our surveys. And right now, we're getting surveys. We're, we're asking kids their voices for fourth grade, right up to twelfth grade. Staff, we're gonna, all staff to be involved in that. And parents, all parents to get involved. And really, we're, we're really looking at, uh, these things, the questions, what are we asking them? The questions? How are students are doing? How are, are students disciplined? How are, how's the school a- atmosphere? Each one, this is the, this is the, the question they're asking. This one's gonna start up right now. It's gonna be in the wintertime. So we're right at the beginning mark of this data gathering. So what they're doing is there's, there's three different tools and they're gonna triangulate. They're gonna basically triangulate and say, okay, we're gonna find out the unbiased, uh, baseline of the work. And so by that, that, they'll, they'll come up and they'll have their findings, their results. They'll go to the, our district leaders. They're gonna go to the, um, each of the schools. each of the school's equity team, and they're going to present that. They'll come to you as a school committee, present a comprehensive, uh, presentation. And then they're going to make recommendations. I mean, that, just because you see the work, doesn't mean you're doing the work. Now the work happens. And so now they'll make some recommendations. Each equity teams and district team will have to say, they can choose, all right, what are we gonna concentrate to do well this year? And, um, and as we decide on the work, MAC has said that they're going to, um, continue to watch and monitor how we're doing and provide support. And I think there's the capacity. We really need to not only have someone just, not only tell us the, you know, show us the work, but then help us with evaluation and saying, okay, this is what you should do, this is what you can do, and here's how you evaluate. And so I'm really looking for that when MAC leaves, we have the capacity to do these things ourselves. So I'm, I'm liking, I'm liking building a capacity towards the work is, is that final statement there. Uh, so our next steps, so this is what we're doing. Uh, we're already right now, I told you before, we finished the data analysis. Our consensus team is, I'm just waiting for one more report. Nearly everything's done. Currently, we are preparing for the surveys. So surveys designed here to capture student experience. Um, and what we want to make sure everyone knows that, um, these surveys are online, they're anonymous. Uh, people can skip questions if they feel like, you know, they don't want to answer this. Um, we're gonna start with, uh, the school staff to begin the, the first stage of this. And, and they'll start actually in November, and they'll end in mid-December. Then we'll have, um, students will have a chance, and each school will decide which day they're gonna do their survey together. And they'll have theirs in December. And parents will have a block of time from, uh, December, all through December, and they will also do it online. And so we'll be, um, asking as many parents to get involved. And the parents one has five languages, and they'll have QR codes wherever they are. We want to make sure that they, they get that, uh, time. The important thing about the parents one is that, uh, before they can communicate about their child, that we're gonna send parents a letter, and we'll send them, um, you know, what the survey's about, uh, we'll actually show in the survey. And they, they feel, otherwise they want to opt out, they can opt out. And that information will get to, um, our principals, and then they'll make sure the students will have something else to do. So, uh, we want to make sure that we're totally transparent. This is what we're trying to do. This is the heart, we want everyone to thrive. But if they still do not, you know, we'll give them options to do that. So that's what we're, we're doing for the surveys. So.
Henry.
Oh, yes.
Before you move on.
Yes, yes.
Could you tell us how we could look at some of those surveys ourselves online?
Would you like to, yeah, I could, I can say.
Can we get the website or what?
Sure, sure.
The link or whatever?
I can get it. All right, good, thank you, thank you. Um, so the, so for you, I, I would like for you, and maybe that will help if you had the, the, a copy of the surveys, to really communicate to the public that what, you know, the full participation a public is really needed. We really like to have as many voices as possible to be, to do the work, to see the work. So we're asking school, uh, school committee members to encourage the school committee, school community, staff, parents, students, to really go full-heartedly on, on this, uh, on this equity, uh, audit. And our goal is what? To eliminate disparity. We, we want to make sure everyone is succeeding. We want to, uh, ensure equitable access, like sports. We want to cultivate a belonging environment. Uh, I would love that, where environment where we are celebrating different people. I love that aspect, um, there. So, uh, we also have three of your members that are gonna be part of the, the process. So I'm glad that Chris and Heather and, and you're gonna be there. So you're part of the advisory, uh, group. And so, uh, I want to make sure that you're in process and you're continuing telling me, again, who's missing? Who does not have full access? Let's make sure that we are, we're, we're offering that for all, all kids. So that's, that's, I hope is our role, and that we have excellence and equity as our, as our standards. Um, and then I, I, I'll, I'll end with this one, is that, um, I want to be, I want to thank the school committee because in the past, uh, they've been very supportive until, you know, they've been very, you've been very supportive. And, um, and I want to hope that we continue with that support. And, uh, I just want to make sure that, uh, we continue with that. When we do all these things, that shirt and that phrase will be included. I want every kid to say, yes, this is my beloved, uh, school, and we learn so much, and we're succeeding and thriving, and so that's where I'm at. So.
Thank you.
I will definitely make sure that you get that.
Yeah, I, I really like to just look at some of the questions.
Absolutely.
Um, so the, the math in me asks that we get them like as a PDF or something, not the QR code, because I don't want to skew the data.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Well, you'll get, you'll get, definitely get a, uh,
Thanks.
The, maybe a Google, uh, PDF.
Yeah, just something so that it's not in your actual dataset.
And you want the student one.
I would like them all.
I would like them all, just, just, I'm curious.
The Vietnamese version? The Vietnamese version is one, I got the, I have five languages, you want the Vietnamese version?
You can give me in French.
She probably, I mean, she probably would be fine with it, actually.
Yeah.
Um, any questions for Henry?
You said the, uh, the staff, uh, were doing it in November and December. Uh, have, it's the end of November, so I'm wondering how that's going, and if you have.
Yeah, the Lawrence really, they, they are, they're really ready to go. And they basically were ready like at the beginning of November, and we kind of had to slow them down. And so we said, I want to make sure we present it to you. They did it today. So they're like, so I went over there and they're like, so, uh, they, they got permission and they did it today. And, uh, right away, I, I see that they're, they're engaged, and I'm very excited. So even after, uh, we're talking, they came up to me and started asking some more questions about their doing stuff. So it, it was really good, it was very good. So I'm very impressed with Lawrence's work.
The other thing is, uh, the notion of parents and the community responding, and I think that's really a challenge, and particularly for those, we really want to hear their voices. And I know you said you want us to participate in that, but I think if we could challenge the newspaper to really let people know, um, I don't know if they read the newspaper, I don't know if they watch television, but how, how can we really reach people who really we want to hear from? Which are the voices that are often not heard?
Yeah.
Because this is very much related to your equity audit.
I'm sorry.
I just want to.
Yeah, that was my question.
Yeah, no, the survey, that is really a parent guardian survey. It's not a community survey.
Right, but, but, but the parents who are.
Yeah, they're in the community. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't the broader community that.
No, because you would mention being, um, they can opt out. And that fear is those who, we really.
They can opt out for their children.
Oh, for their children?
Yes.
It's an opt-out for children.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm unclear.
Well, everyone can opt out, if they don't do it.
Well, you just might not doing it, but.
If you do it.
But they can opt out for their, their child, not to take it as.
Right, but I think the point is a really important one, and that was my question as well, is how, you know, wha- what is the strategy? How can we help? How, what else has to happen to make sure that we've got voices from people who might, who we really need to hear from, but might not participate? Especially if it's all of the survey online? And so does that present barriers to some people who may not? I mean, most everyone has a phone, I suppose, but we're making an assumption.
Well, we have ways, for, for the kids, they won't have any problems.
That'll be fine.
But for the adults, we will have, um, uh, we'll have in each school, uh, hard copies. And if we scan that to MAC, and they'll, they'll take care of it, and they'll put it in the cell. So we, we won't have a problem with, with that.
But getting back to the other question, are there ways that we as school committee members or just people that live in town and know that this is an important piece, can help in that?
Yeah. I mean, the problem is that some, some, some people feel that there might be taboo talking about race and, and gender and equity and all that, all those things. And until we start talking about it, we're gonna still be uncomfortable. So we need to talk about it. And, uh, I, I know the kids want to talk about, I was with a kid group today, and they're like, we want to talk about the complexity of race, you know? Uh, and it's rich, it's, it's from different countries, a different way of looking at it. And then they got started, we need to talk about it. Uh, once we understand, we talk about it, we say, I see you, every child, I see you, and I celebrate, and you are in, you're welcome here. And now let's, let's, let's make sure that you are getting awards, you are succeeding, you're going to soccer, you're doing all these things, because now I see you. So if we can start talking about some of the things that become tough to talk about, but we can show the, the public, it's not that bad. Let's talk about it, let's embrace each other, and let's do some love tough.
Love tough, yeah.
I'm gonna, it's hard, I'm gonna have to get love tough.
Uh, Melissa.
Hi. Henry, I love it when you, uh, present a school committee. I literally could listen to you for hours, days, whatever. I love the work you do, I'm so grateful for you and all things Falmouth, my beloved. Um, so getting back to one of your earlier slides, I love the, what is an equity audit analogy? I think that this is a really great way to break down what it means to have equity and equality and service. And I, if there's a way that we could have that sort of, uh, I don't want to say everywhere in all of our buildings, but I think that it's a really easy way for students and people of all, uh, schools and ages to understand what it means. Or the classic, oh, okay, sorry. Um, the classic picture of the kids at the game where they can't see over the fence. So, um, I apologize. All right. Um, and I too am excited, uh, like Kelly and Terry, to see the data, uh, for the QR code, for the surveys that go out to families and students. And, uh, just let us know what we can do to help promote, um, getting the word out there for those surveys, to make sure that we are, um, able to reach as many people as we can. Because I also think that it's very important that, um, to talk about something uncomfortable, you just have to start talking about it, and you just have to keep talking about it, and you make it comfortable.
Absolutely, so, thank you.
Yeah, um, I just, as a member, member of the advisory, also just wanted, um, we didn't go into this really, but it's, uh, kudos, um, for the incredibly thoughtful work that you've put into all of these surveys, down to like the wording of questions and making sure that the survey is as accessible and as inclusive as po- as possible from so many different perspectives. How is, how is this family? How is this student? How is this person gonna read this question? How is that gonna land with this other person? And really trying to, to work on that. So kudos on that, I will say, and I don't want to be throwing bombs at the last minute. Um, I'm curious what's driving the timeline, and I'll just say, as a parent, um, on November 28th, I'm already in like panic mode for the month of December.
Oh, no, yeah, it's crazy.
And to see December 12th to January 12th, and I'm like, that's, that's like a week and a half of school, and then break, and that's the week and a half of school that two of my three kids have concerts, and there's teacher-parent conference, like, there's just so much during the month of December. And then you've got one week after, we get back in January. And so I'm curious whether there's any latitude to extend that, or, you know, how we kind of create some accommodation for that? Because it's just a really busy and kind of broken up period when people's attention is gonna be pulled in a lot of directions. And, and, you know, I think for the, the staff and the students who are in school, we can ensure that it still happens. I just worry with the families with that timeline.
We, we just need to, uh, do a better job, wherever we have in December. If there's any kind of function, we should have QR codes ready for them. Say, parents, please, you know, like, get the message, no matter where we are. If, and when we have this live, we need to say, hey, have you done the survey? There it is. Um, I just don't want it to last too long, because there's a lot of things going on.
How long does the survey take? That's one thing you actually don't have in hand.
Thirty minutes, that's right, thirty minutes. Thirty minutes for the, and, and you don't want it too long, you want it, we want to get it done, and then we want to get this result back. And so, um, but we're, I was talking to Dr. Dora, and we were saying that we'll look at the numbers at the, at, you know, after vacation, we'll just see where we're at and see what we want to do. But, but, uh, we want to get as much people, as many people as we want, so.
Deadline extended is always a great message.
It's another reason to push stuff out, you can blast out the deadline extended.
No, 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 I said it for January 12th, and then just January 10th, you can be the savior and say, deadline extended.
I know that your packet says that, but the, it's actually December 11th to December 22nd.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, okay.
It's December.
We have another survey that we have to get out in January, that has to be done by, um, mid, mid-January.
Yeah, so, I mean, one of the, I, I don't know if this is still a, a major issue, but, um, whether or not a lot of families leave at Thanksgiving and go to Brazil for the month, and they're, or, you know, so they're not even here to participate. And we don't want to lose that voice either. So maybe that's something I'll pack instead. Maybe that's what we gotta do next.
We'll talk about it, but we are emailing it, check your email, but yeah.
Yeah, we just, I mean, and, and this is a wonderful conversation to be having, because everyone is so invested in making sure every single voice is heard. And we could just do it and check a box and move on, but instead, here we are. Did you have something else, Margaret?
Yeah, I wanted to also agree with what Heather said absolutely about the incredible work that you're doing. I'm really so grateful for it. Um, I'm wondering too, you know, I am focused on the parents, so. I'm wondering if you're encouraging the children to let the parents know that there's supposed to be a survey? You know, so that, you know, they can be part of the, you know, we did a survey in school, you ever get one too? I'm wondering how, because I really, I'm really concerned about the voices that we want to hear, that are the least likely to come to school, to be a president of everything, and the least likely to be online, or any kinds of things. So I think it's so important. I, I know you're doing incredible work, right? I just.
Yeah, so, so from, uh, we, we've been having our connection with, uh, Chris Harmon Communication, Harmon Communication, and he's actually suggested a, a plan. Uh, I, there'll be, uh, thank you for Ryan, he's got my website ready going, so you can actually look up, uh, ask about the, uh, the audit right now on the website.
On Friday.
On Friday, sorry, Friday. Sorry, uh, I gotta make sure, uh, Laurie will be sending out, you know, the letters on Friday.
On Friday.
And, um, and then from that point on, it will be like multiple, um, you know, either, uh, a, a social media post or any, any kind of stuff like that.
Or a newspaper.
Yeah, so.
Catch you, catch you media posts, so that we can share.
So we'll, we'll be doing that. So, yeah, the, December 1st is gonna be the big push to do all these things. And, uh, and that's why we're doing the, the staff first, and then, and then they can start communicating with the kids and what's going on, and that will, you know, you'll be able to talk to parents as well, so they're that, that's me. And I, let me just say from you, I, the, the, those details, I need lots of help. So like, don't say it was just me, because that's not my real house. Uh, Dr. Dora was on, you know, making sure we gotta do that. And that's both of that are things, so we're, we're relying on a lot of people to really look at this stuff. So whatever you say is, is not one person, it's multiple people, uh, there. So that, I can tell you're supposed to, if you talk about this, we go, this is so, too many, you know? So there's so many people that are, are involved, and so, um, I, I, we definitely couldn't do it alone, so we need your help.
Wonderful, thanks so much, Henry, appreciate the update. Uh, next is the budget, isn't teaching on the budget?
Are you a pretty stable game person?
I think it's great. Come on, sit at the table, mine, I sell all my suits back. Everybody all alone. No, you guys are all.
All right, so, uh, tonight, um, Paul Dart and I will be presenting, um, our first presentation, uh, on the budget. Uh, we will be back, um, with an update, uh, on December 12th, and then again in January, um, leading up to, um, a school committee vote in February. So this is just the, the first of several, uh, lots of, um, and feel free, um, to ask those questions as we move along, you know, or if we come at the end, either way, it's, uh, we'll be fine. So, um, many, many of this, uh, information, much of this information you've, um, you know, heard before, but just want to reiterate, in the budget process, we really start with our framework of student success and what's important. So we're looking at that Clipper experience, if you just saw this again, and everything we're doing, we're really focused on, um, that Clipper experience, which includes, you know, our commitment to, um, our, our students and families that, um, our students will receive an excellent education. Um, and that is for every student every day. So whether it is the, um, social emotional learning, whether it's meeting, um, every academic need, you know, it's the, um, the equity work that we do. We're, we're committed to every single student every day. We've got to look at what those needs are. And so then that, that leads to the second point about the student needs. And as I've shared many times over the presentations, the students' needs over the last several years have increased tremendously. The needs around, you know, we've increased reading specialists because the, the, the reading needs have increased. We've increased special education teachers and teaching assistants because the needs have increased. We've increased our English language development teachers because we have more students learning English or multilingual learners that are here in Fama. And so in, in multiple ways. And then the SEL also, we know that the social emotional needs of our students are increased, so the additional counselors. So that's how, you know, identifying the needs and then we have to look at the staffing to make sure that our staff actually aligns with the needs of our students. And so that's the process each year that we go through. We do a lot of that in the spring, but then heavily in the fall, during the month of November, we have met with each principal. We have gone over all the needs, the students and the staff, and that helps start to build that budget and what we actually need to look for for the FY25 budget. So with the, you know, so we look at the budget, we align with those priorities and needs. And then we do have to identify and resolve budget constraints. And you're gonna hear a little bit more about that from Paul, about some of those budget constraints that we're going to be facing in FY25. And then we always look at a multi-year plan. So we are, we know, for instance, there's just, you know, two things you'll, you'll be hearing about. But, you know, so we have our, our transportation costs are increasing, but we're also coming at the end of our transportation contract. So we'll be going back out to bid. So we have to look a couple of years down the road when we do multi-year to what that contract might look like. We know that we're getting ready to begin negotiations with FEA. So we have to start thinking, you know, we have one more this year and then next year FY25, contract year. And then we'll be, we'll be negotiating because in the FY26 will be, you know, and so we have to look at the staffing. So just multi-year and what the, the budget process along with, you know, what the needs are going to be in the schools. So it's a multi-year look when we, when we do that. So this is something different that you're seeing this year. One of my superintendent priorities. I've typically had several positions that I may be wanting to consider. And you're not going to see that this year because the budget for next year is going to be tight. And so it's not going to be here where we can add positions as much as, you know, my heart hurts because of that. You know, everyone knows that I really want to start the, you know, a rural language program at the elementary. I know, Terry. And, and I, I think, and it's, you know, but we have to be fiscally responsible. And, and so sometimes those, even though we know academically that it's good for students at a younger age to do that, we really have to be able to make decisions. And so that's a hard one. We want to start our welcome center with our, you know, family liaison and our, you know, Portuguese interpreter. And again, it's just, you know, we already know it this early in the budget planning, but that's just not going to be possible for next year. But it is still a goal. And we, first, you know, the priority is making sure that every single student is being able to make academic progress. And so, so that's important. We need to make sure that we have the right staffing, the right programs available for, for our students. And we need to consider the student class sizes as well. I know that's really important to our families and to the school committee. And so trying to balance all that and still being within a budget. And as you hear about the budgetary pressures in, in just a bit, you're gonna see how trying to make all that work is really, is a puzzle to be fiscally responsible. But our absolute number one priority is the academic success of our students. So you've seen a lot of this information. You can see that our enrollment is 2949. That was presented during the enrollment. These are October 1 dates, although our enrollment can change up or down slightly from day to day. We always stay with our October 1 numbers. Oh, sorry. Okay. And so then just a snapshot of our staffing. I presented this last year. So just, I brought this back just to show where we are on our, well, so we're at 677 overall. If you take our teachers, our teaching assistants and our one-to-ones, which we have 26 one-to-one aides, and they are under the non-union staff that won't allow it. So 26 of those bond are there. And that is around 68% of our, our staff. I mean, 68, 69% of our staff, overall staffing is just direct support to students.
A bunch of percent?
60, 68 to 69%.
Is one-to-one?
No, no. Teachers, teaching assistants and, and our one-to-ones, that group because it's direct instructional support. Obviously, we have a lot, but the, the direct instructional support to students. This was a new slide I added last year. And again, just so you can see, I will tell you that we did have a, a big retirement year last year. And so we have more teachers that we were able to add in the years one to five, but still in the mid-range, years six and up is still obviously our teaching range for our teacher experiences, experience. And I think just to really look at the fact that we have most of our staff, I mean, so our teachers, UNFA, our teachers that have masters or masters beyond is pretty incredible and something to be very proud of. So the, you've seen these slides again, but I think it's important just when we talk about our growing population in certain categories and our economic disadvantage, the fact that we are 45% in an area for economic disadvantage, when you can see over the last five years from a 20 to 45 in five years is, is a very large jump. And just a reminder about our multilingual learners, you know, we're over, you know, 2.5% over the last five years of increase. And our students with disabilities, you know, about 5% over, you know, increased over five years. So it's, it's a, it's a growth. And, you know, with, with that comes, you know, we love all of our children. With that comes, we need to make sure that we're meeting the needs of every single student. And at this point, Paul, I'm gonna run over you. You ready?
Sure.
Okay.
All right. We'll just start off with the sources and funding for the district. Essentially have the, the town budget of $56,175, that includes a chapter 70 funding of roughly $9.3 million. Supplementing that funding, we have grants, entitlement grants of 1.6, roughly close to 1.7 million. Our school choice months were $980,000. And the circuit bracket, we, we talked about it, our last school committee meeting of $646,000. Just to give you a sense of entitlement grants, big ones is the IDEA grant, the 240 grant, which is roughly around $996,000. The total one grant is our next largest one, which is around $484,000. There's a number of small grants following that.
Yeah, Terry, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, but this figure here, that's what the finance committee recommended for us for next year? That 56?
56.
For this year.
This is our budget for FY24. We're telling you where we're at right now. We don't know next year's budget. We're not through the budget process yet.
Okay, that's why I, that's why I wondered what that was. Except this year.
Sorry, I set that up front. This is.
No, you didn't say anything wrong. I just, yeah, thank you.
Okay. And, and how we broke down the budget by category. So the biggest high line item obviously is salaries, $46 million represents 83% of the overall budget. You have instructional supplies are roughly 2.5 million. That's about 4.5% of the overall budget. Transportation, our overall transportation, including, including special ed transportation in that number as well. It's maintenance on our buses as well. There's the $2,540,000, about 4.5%. On a district tuition budget is 2.125 million. And our, we have a large item here, we've talked about and we're going to a little bit more detail in our latest slides, but our utility budget's 1.4 million. We expect that to increase significantly. That's about 2.5% of the overall budget. And this, this is again, this is the budget of the town, $56 million. This doesn't include the grant funds on top of that. And then finally, the maintenance represents about 2% of the budget, 1.1 million. All right. So obviously, in terms of, as Dr. Dora was just mentioning, you know, the critical ingredients into the, to the budgets, you know, is here for local budget decisions what the town is able to allocate and it's been incredibly supportive over the years to the school system. And it's been incredibly supportive since I've been here in the last few months and initiatives as well. But obviously, we deal in the reality of the budgets of the town. As Dr. Dora has mentioned, the needs of the students, especially the special education needs, multilingual needs, et cetera, continue to grow and impact budgets in personal decisions. Enrollment trends are a key factor and require annual staffing division, decisions by school, by department, by grade, et cetera. Time staffing reallocation is, is necessary based on the grade sizes, et cetera. Payroll expenses have increased. Last year they were up 30%. This year they're going up two and a half percent. And for the fiscal year '25, they will be up two and, two and a half percent as well. On top of that, you'll have stipend raise increases of roughly 1% estimate. And then most staff are at the mid to top levels with a few retirements, resignations. Expect a lower number this year than last year. And then the other key factors, just we have older buildings. And the older buildings require greater capital expenditures, but also day-to-day maintenance are key factors. In the decision last year, we were roughly $200,000 over budget on maintenance issues. Our maintenance, overall budget is up for this year. We are, as we talked about in the capital plan, moving a lot of expenses into the capital plan for the future to try to make the necessary repairs and take the pressure off the, this particular category in the budget. The other realities affecting the budget is the S R grant of $800,000 ending this year. We've talked about, that's been, you know, the impact of that, we've been planning for several years now. Also, the state chapter 70 funding for the town has increased, but the charter school reimbursement decreased this past year roughly in half. And that's, you know, there's a formula that that impacts what, what the town is actually gets back. And it's a mixture of student. So the first year of the students reimburse at 100% at the charter school. Next year, it's, second year, it's 60%, it drops down to 40% at their third year and down to 0% in the fourth year. So that impact, that aging demographic essentially reduced the reimbursement that the town receives for that. The federal entitlement programs that we have are essentially flat year over year. And then school choice, you know, has been a strong source of funding for critical investments, especially in the area of technology. All of our Chromebook purchases or leases have been done through the school choose funds and for the new curriculum, especially in the math area this past, this past summer. The, the, one of the key factors you know, significant pressure is out of district tuition cost. Last year, out of district, this year, out of district tuition increased 14% year over year. That's driven by a state formula. So, and then the next year, fiscal year '25, that out of district tuition we've talked about this last meeting, is going up 4.7%. So we expect the impact on that, from the budget of roughly $470,000 increase in spending for fiscal year '25. Other areas that have, you know, restraining the budget is utilities. We expect, you know, with indications from the town that our electric, electricity costs are going to go up 35% for this next fiscal year '25. So they're at the end of their contract. So that's the, the, you know, indication of the increase. That alone will drive our utility costs up by another $386,000. We are looking at alternatives down the road to things like solar energy, et cetera, but they're not going to be coming online if those projects get approved into the fiscal, you know, they won't be coming online to help out with fiscal year '25. Another factor is, and Dr. Dora mentioned this, is that our busing costs increased 12% last year. They're up 3% this year. Next year, they'll be going up 3% for fiscal year '25, roughly $60,000. But some of the areas beyond that, that it will increase are field trips. A local field trip was $300 in, in fiscal year '23. It's now $360 fiscal year '24. There'll be $400 in fiscal year '25. So, you know, transportation is an expensive component. And, and finally, the maintenance of the, of the buildings, as I said, you've run over, you know, by 200,000. And, you know, that's with dealing with a lot of one-time issues that coming up, that come up because you have an aging plant. And so the capital plan really is our lifeline to do the longer-term repair. We have coming up in April, you know, a new roof plant for North Fama from Tampa and a boiler plant for North Fama for the following year. And other major maintenance programs we'll be having in the capital plan to try to reduce that economic impact for the fiscal year '25 budget.
So at one point in our, one of our meetings, we talked about that 14% several times last fall when we were first notified about it. And we were waiting, you know, I think July, August, I mentioned, we were waiting to see if the state supplemental budget, if they were gonna, if there was gonna be any help. Just the state supplemental budget came out and there's gonna be very little, if at all, help to any district in the, in the state. help to any district in the state, but we will not be receiving it. So now that we know that, we've already talked to the town. So that 14% and supported by the Budget Subcommittee, that also has the Finance Committee members, to go in April and ask for support for this year for that 14% because it was a large one-time cost. Paul mentioned the 4.7% increase for next year. And because we have no reason to believe that that won't be the new standard of the increase in the base, the town has, you know, looked at if it's going to be a reoccurring cost, not to use the special education stabilization for reoccurring costs. So if that 4.7 is going to be the new reality in our budget, then it should be a part of our operating budget. So we're working through that. We just want to know the difference that, so we will, in April, be asking you to support us going to town meeting to ask for that. We don't know how much, quite yet, but that's going to be, but somewhere between 400,000 and 500,000, we're predicting. So when we have that number locked in, that we'll come to you to, you know, ask for your support on that.
Can we just, can, because we have a lot of new members. Can you, either you or I fill in what that stabilization.
I'm going to.
Oh, okay.
You were there.
I was there, yeah. So because out-of-district special ed costs can skyrocket with very little warning. And we were in the position of being in a shortfall years ago. The town meeting created this special education stabilization fund and put money into it so that in the event that we ever had this one-time unexpected expense, there would be money there to avoid any catastrophes. And so that's, it exists for that purpose, and that's why we're talking about using it for exactly what it was.
Yeah, for that one-time 14%, but then building into the salary, yeah, for that 4.67% that we'll probably need a year over year.
I mean, I just.
No, 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 I appreciate you saying that because I was certain.
Even the old people get, were helped by that information.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm sure you voted on it because you were there.
I think there's about 900,000 in that fund right now, so.
Money for this, and then hopefully we'll meet it for a long time.
And so, more questions that are concerned?
Questions about the budget, comments? Some of us have entered this presentation under tax because of our Budget Subcommittee.
I see Melissa's hand's already up, so.
Go ahead, okay, okay. So every single category of need in our students has been increasing steadily, if not dramatically, over the past five years. And I would expect, I'm curious if you would expect that to continue? And then I'm looking at enrollment, and if you look at Lawrence plus Morse, in four years, if we retain those students, we'll be at Falmouth High School, like, over 900 students, right? So total numbers potentially also, and I don't know if that's a trend we're seeing, is that actually enrollment in earlier years, that it looks like we've potentially got growth. And I'm just wondering if, first of all, do you feel like the budget over the past five years has been growing commensurate with those needs? And then, I mean, there's, there's no way with these continued increases in numbers and needs that that budget can stay flat? And yet, going through the realities, it's like funding source after funding source is flat, flat, flat. So I guess, stating the obvious to you, but just curious what you've been thinking about and discussing in terms of both how much of that continued projected increase would need to be borne by the town and where there are other funding sources we can look to to diversify and continue to grow the budget in line with the needs?
So I'm going to kind of drop down a little further. When you look at our incoming kindergarten, we have, you know, one bubble year that happened a couple of years ago that, you know, was 250, but we have not seen that. And the numbers are very low for the other years. I see what you're saying about if you look at that, we do usually have a drop between Morse Pond and Lawrence, and we have a drop between Lawrence and the high school, which is just, it's also the trend. So, you know, I don't expect that the high school numbers, I mean, they may go up some. You know, they've been at 800, you know, around 800. This year, they're, you know, a little lower, but I don't see it going up much more than that. Not if you really look at the trends over time, or you see that each individual grade kind of coming through. I think when you look at that, that does, you would think that that would predict that, and that would be wonderful.
Yeah, but there's too many options.
Yeah.
They can go to the books, well, yeah.
Yeah. And then your first question, you did learn, oh, the needs of the students. I do think that we're going to see, over the next couple of years, we're going to see a definite continued increase in special education, which I'm excited about. I mean, that's kind of our prediction there. When we look at the needs of our preschool students, you know, we're predicting that those needs. The multilingual learners is a little harder to predict. You know, it could continue at the rate that we've seen the last couple of years, but then maybe not. And I don't know if we have anything to actually would indicate that for us. We've talked about that, but I don't know that.
I think that was all of them. I think that was all the questions.
Well, no, I mean, thinking about diversification or additional funding sources, or does this all come down to larger requests to the town?
We can, we can look for grants. There's very few, I mean, every grant that comes by, that, you know, a lot of times the grants that come by are grants that really start something new again, right? And we feel like we really have a solid plan, that we don't need to go out and look for grants through our new program. We need to state a path, you know, that we're on and support there. So, I mean, we're looking all the time for opportunities, but I don't, there's just not a lot out there to continue to support what you're already doing. Yeah, so I think we, you know, our needs will have to, we're going to just in close communication with the town.
Melissa?
Hi, thanks. So my first sort of question is, with the out-of-tuition, out-of-district tuition increase, that also can work in our benefit as well, correct? And is that tuition numbered, state-based? Like, who makes the decision how much it costs for a student to leave?
So it's not the school choice, and that does get, that's confusing, so thank you for the question. So the charter school, the charter school reimbursement, it's the town, it's a formula from the state that says what the tuition is going to be. And then out of those chapter 70 dollars and the charter school reimbursement that comes to the town, then they pay that tuition out to the charter schools. So we actually don't pay it, the town pays it.
Right.
Chapter 70 funding, if that, if we get less charter school reimbursement, the town's going to use some of the chapter 70 dollars to be able to pay that bill, then leaves less chapter 70 dollars to come into the school.
Okay. And then what about school choice? So Falmouth kid goes to born.
So the town, again, once again, and I, we definitely want to end on the note that the town is very good to us. The town actually pays the school choice tuition when our students leave, and they give us all the tuition money coming, or the, not tuition, the, the school choice receipts come to us directly, and we receive all of those.
Nice, okay. And I, so a couple more things. So I don't think that this is unique to Falmouth. Losing students or having enrollment kind of trends downward. I think it's just throughout the country, not just Falmouth.
Correct.
Grants are great, but they're temporary? I don't think that that's a, it sounds like a permanent problem with a temporary solution. So I am grateful that Heather asked the question because I just hope that it gets people's minds going. And I know that this is currently frustrating for us, but I still love options. I still love that our kids have options. I still love that we have the Upper Cape School and the charter schools and the private schools and all the options that they have because we didn't always. And as much as I love Falmouth public schools, it isn't for everyone. So that's just my thoughts on that.
Thank you. Any other questions about the budget? Awesome. I don't even have any because I've been through like four times already. Thank you so much, thanks Paul.
All right, thanks.
Next, we have acting on a ton of policies. Mary says we can take them all together. Did you have anything you wanted to say about any of them?
No, just again, the policies, the school finance policies that were updated based on mask guidance, changes in some statutes, and guidance issued by the Inspector General's office.
All right, thank you. So I'll make the motion because I'm going to read through all of them. I make a motion to approve the finance policy revisions to policy DBC, DBG, DJ, DGA, DH, DI, DIE, DJ, DJS, DJE, and DK. Is there a second? Thanks, Margaret. Any last questions or comments about the policies that we reviewed last meeting? All right, it's a roll call vote, Melissa.
Melissa Keith, yes.
Heather Goldstone, yes.
Madyrbs, yes.
Augusta, yes.
Suzie, yes.
Lumpy, yes.
Welch also a yes, so it passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Thanks, Mary, for all your help with that. And next, we have our superintendent update, Lori.
Okay, so first, the update, so we did the budget presentation. Paul, did your monthly budget sheet, summary sheet for you, is at the table? If you have any questions about that, you can ask now.
Oh, I didn't get one. Can I get that?
Oh. If you have any questions about any of them right now, you can certainly ask. Or if you have questions, you can always email Paul, or we can look that up on the next month. So we wanted, we didn't want to skip a month, we wanted to make sure that you got.
If you get back.
Got your something.
Oh, I'm putting it upside down, I can't see. Lovely, all right. Do you have anything else?
Yes, I didn't, I didn't think there was any question, I was just calling to do some, I don't know, let's tell them if you can ask a question.
No, we're not going to ask them anything.
All right.
Give it an email.
So just December, it's always the exciting time for the, you know, our performing arts. So we have the all elementary course concert, December 18th, at Falmouth High School at 6:30. It's really lovely to see all four elementary schools come together, so I encourage you to come and see that. Lawrence has their winter band and choir concert, December 20th, at 7:00 PM at Lawrence. And then the Falmouth High School winter choral concert is December 21st at Falmouth High School at 7:00 PM. So they're all wonderful, and it's to get you in the spirit of the season. Wonderful, thanks.
Any questions for Lori? All right, next, routine business, acting on the minutes from the November 14th meeting. So a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
May I be chairing, is there a second? Thanks, Heather. Any comments or edits or anything to the minutes? Great, Melissa, roll call vote, please.
Melissa Keith, yes.
Heather, Heather Goldstone, yes.
Terry Madyrbs, yes.
Augusta, yes.
Suzie, yes.
Lumpy, yes.
And Welch, yes, they pass you down, honestly, thank you so much. All right. Next, we have committee member reports. Anyone have a report to share? Oh, I was like, somebody has to have something, Melissa.
So I just wanted to comment on the football game, that although the Clippers lost the Thanksgiving game, it was a great effort and an A-plus to Evan Hotman, who made the goal. Touchdown, sorry.
And you were.
Talk you off, sorry. It was also great to see the two bands side by side. It was a little bit awkward at times when the Red Hawk Band was right next to the Clipper Band, and they got to continuously play their school song next, like, in Clipper country. In the, it was a little bit awkward at times, but looking at the whole picture of that day, there was a breakfast for all of the, both the bands to be together, there was some good camaraderie. I, I'm hopeful that maybe some friendships were made. It was also great to see so many people come to the games. There were, parking lots were jammed, there was parking on Gifford Street. It was, as usual, amazing. I always love going to the game. It's just Falmouth at its finest, excuse me. That's awesome, thanks.
Oh, my gosh. Heather, did you have a report?
Yeah, really briefly, I got a chance to attend the, one of the staff listening sessions that Lori and Sonia have been doing around the district. And a small number of staff showed up, kind of at first saying, really just here to listen. And I want to say kudos to Lori for doing a great job of kind of drawing them out and getting conversation going, and what turned into a really interesting and insightful conversation that I thought highlighted the creativity and commitment of our staff members, like, well outside anything that's in their job descriptions, to think about how we could rearrange the school day and come up with, you know, very creative solutions to the challenges that they were seeing students show up within their classrooms. So it was just, it was really great. So just kudos for also doing those listening sessions because clearly, you know, showing up without an agenda, it takes time, but it felt really well worth it to me, so.
Awesome, thanks, Derek.
Well, I'm doing something that's really not school committee, but it's school. I've been doing a yearbook giveaway project. The Jill Parker, who is the permanent librarian at the high school, was rearranging some space in the library, and these yearbooks were on these shelves. It was just, no one looked at them, they'd been sitting there, some of them 50 years. So she, she offered some to the staff, and then I said, okay, I'm going to put it on, you know me, I've always been against Facebook, forever I'm against Facebook. But I put it on the fabulous Falmouth, and I'm happy to say that we made at no cost 75 people, and we're going to do it again next month, got yearbooks that, and it was a lot of work to organize and everything, but I also want to thank some hockey players and football players to help move the boxes around. Anyway, when you hear the stories about someone said, my father died, and we went to clean out his house, and there was no pictures of him. You happen to have a 1973 yearbook, and I said, yes, I do. So anyway, I just, I'm talking about it because I want people to know they can do it again next month. So I'll put it out on fabulous Falmouth again, but.
Awesome.
And I've been looking through them too, reason it takes so long. In 1989, I'm going to bring you the picture, there was a cultural awareness club at Falmouth High School. It was many years, but in 1989, there were like 25 kids sitting around this table, so I'm going to bring it to you.
Bring it.
Wonderful, thank you.
I love it.
Margaret?
Yeah, I attended a listening session too, and I think the listening sessions, few people come, but it's very insightful, and that's what they have, and they talked about a lot of things in terms of cultural diversity, in terms of openness to students. But one of the things I wanted to mention in particular, and it's not related to the budget, but I think that certainly the increase in terms of student needs. But I think it's also important somehow to talk about what we do for our other students because families can be concerned that that's our focus. because families can be concerned that that's our focus, and therefore, people who don't need to be challenged are not really, you know, don't need to be challenged in terms of success, but need more in terms of they're excelling, and they really need more. And I think we have a great volunteer program, I think, and I think it's really important for us to sort of highlight that at some point, so people can know that it isn't like just our special needs. And that's what we're talking about, the budget. But there are various ways that we provide students at various, at various levels to succeed. And I think it's so important that we say that. And the other thing I want to say is, our theater program is so wonderful. I went to Falmouth High School, if you didn't see it, you missed it. And I look forward to you going in the springtime, because they just do such an outstanding job. It's so impressive to see these young people and their acting. And not just the acting. I was sitting next to your friend and my friend from last year, and her daughter.
I got to love her.
And her daughter was behind us, and she was doing the whatever.
Oh, okay, yes, it took me a while, but yeah, the set and the sound and audio mixing.
So it provides our students with such a variety of opportunities that we really need to celebrate and highlight. Because I know, when we talked about athletics, we talked about winning, and I'm glad you mentioned the game, Melissa, because even though they didn't win, I think it's important that sports also be a way for students to work together, to understand being in a group. Yes, winning's important, but it's not everything, Tom. And there's lots of things students learn.
I agree.
You know, and, you know, we only have one, one person who wins, or one team that wins, but a lot of other people don't win, and we need to celebrate their, what they learned in their.
Yes, for sure, graceful losing.
Sonia, I wanted to thank you for your response on my inquiry and reading program. And if I may, I'm going to be reaching, I have a few more questions at some point. Now, in regards to a school resource officer, I was thankful that Chief Lori had mentioned the possibility if he's able to work towards helping us get a second one this year. But my personal opinion is that we, as a committee, I would suggest that we write a letter to the selectmen, the finance committee, and whoever will listen in regards to, again, my personal opinion, but that we need this person. And we did have two for quite a while, and things for various reasons, it was taken away from us, mainly financial. But I think if we stress the fact that our safety monitors are not law enforcement officers, and that we need that second resource officer, again, my personal.
All right, so I've got two things for future request for information, any others? Oh, and I didn't do my, my committee update. So policy, subcommittee met, and is looking at a new policy on therapy dogs, and also a whole, a bunch of other finance committee, finance-related policy updates, so those will be pending at some point. I already mentioned the budget met, and LPAC, the LPAC, the English Language Parent Advisory Council Committee? I don't know, one or the other. We met as a work group today to talk about what the registration process looks like for new students to come into the district. It was another great meeting with that group. All right, Melissa, did you have any other? I didn't see if you had a request or anything.
I don't have a request. I do have my 89-year book, if anybody would like to see the cultural awareness group. And it was a robust group, I will let you know, probably 20 odd students.
Hold that picture up, oh my god.
Hold on, please hold, I have it right here, Mark. I would also like to say that they, and they, this wasn't just like a group that was like a figurehead kind of thing. These students met, and they, I remember that they had, where the heck? They had, like, purposeful things in, like, during school. It was like the cultural awareness group, or the cultural awareness club. I'm going to say it incorrectly, but they, they weren't just like, oh, we're going to just do something, or whatever, we're just going to meet whenever. They really participated and did things and tried to encourage things. So I'm going to hold this up. I can't say, oh. It was a big group, there were a lot of students there.
All right, always nice to end on a, on a good note.
So, anyway, it used to be there, they were a great group, and they did really great things. And I'm sorry that I'm sick and coughing, and it's disastrous.
Want to make the motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it, roll call. She says yes, even though she's happy.
Goldstone, yes.
Karen DeRis, yes.
Augusta, yes.
And Welch, thanks so much, everybody, we're adjourned. Thanks for your patience.